This meeting of the Board of Supervisors of Penn Township Wednesday, February 26, 2014 will now come to order. We will stand, pledge allegiance, and a moment of silence, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. First item on there is the executive session. I'd like to offer comment that Brian and myself had a session with the Cohen Group from Pittsburgh, conference call, and in regards to our wireless ordinance to update us with us, we have it in our hands, and there'll be discussion on that later on tonight, and I wanted to bring that to attention, that that executive session was held, yes. This time we have recognition of visitors.
First one on the agenda.
Okay. Jennifer Phoenix?
I don't see her here. What she wanted was to rent a room to do, she has a home business where she counsels other people starting small businesses and home businesses. She wanted to rent a room. I just don't know all the particulars yet because she couldn't tell me right then.
Okay.
So we'll have to table her unless she comes in later.
Okay. And Randy Mladenoff?
Back from the last meeting, or last month, because it was tabled about the EK acres and the council solicitor wanted to look over the paperwork to see what we could do to make everything legal for the Qualls wanting to have a tentative agreement with them not to use that private line.
Okay. I've looked at this, Randy, in detail, you know. I guess I have one thing that I wanted to ask you there. You say in regards to this driveway going in there to legalize existing dirt and stone driveway, to legalize it. I guess, why are you saying to legalize it?
So that you know if they don't use the other private rough road that they do have access to the property through that driveway that's existing, but it was never formally legalized at this point.
Permitted.
Permitted.
Okay.
Use the wrong words there, but...
So you're saying that, in your opinion, that it's not a legal driveway?
No, I'm just trying to cross the Ts and dot the Is in case down the road saying they don't have an access.
Okay.
They don't have a permitted access.
Okay.
Trying to work ahead and trying to come up with everything you need to, for us to move forward with that.
Okay. And I see you have a printed thing here from Martha Qualls. Nothing in here that says on this application legalize existing driveway, driveway has been used and existed. It says that it keeps them from using the other one. Nothing in your agreement, there is nothing in here that guarantees us that they're not going to use that?
There's a...
Before this driveway was, they always accessed that property from the road that we're talking about in question.
Okay.
Okay. And so this driveway that went in here is the same one that goes to my home. This is all taken place at a time when there was no need or requirements, and a lot of others over the township, so my driveway into my place would fall under a driveway that needs legalized too.
Okay.
If that's what you're looking at.
Right. I'm just trying to alleviate concerns down the road, and your concern, I could probably suggest is that we would install a central fence, maybe just put real fence or something across where they would have parks.
Okay. Do these people realize that they're never going to use that access again?
Yes. They're upon an agreement, tentative agreement upon approval from the supervisors, where I would pay them not to use that.
Okay.
And use their other driveway.
Okay. Well, I had discussion with Solicitor Wagner on it, and he wished to be addressed this, but he's not going to be here this evening. Okay. And so I've taken a look at everything there, and there is some questions in detail and some that he has also, plus he has those answers to give. Did he submit anything written from those from the planning commission, what they want to know?
I gave them to him last week, last month, I mean.
But he hasn't...
He has not sent anything back.
So they still need to be answered, and obvious, it'll be obvious here as to why he's not here shortly.
Planning Commission, I think their questions were just directed to him, to see if that paper that he would sign and legalize would be sufficient.
There were questions on that, there was questions on the driveway that's existing and...
Enforcement and do not enforce it.
And enforcement and not, there was different layers of it.
I guess that's what I'm looking for. What do you need, if we put a fence up, would that be...
And that was part of the questions that were sent to the solicitor.
Okay. And I guess what you're saying is he's not coming tonight and...
That's correct.
And there won't be any solutions or suggestions tonight.
That's also correct, okay.
And it's tabled till next month?
Yeah. I make a motion that we table it till next month, okay?
Is there any way he could get to some answers, and I could get them from the secretary?
If he submitted them, and you guys approved it, yeah.
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 Do what we can for you, okay?
Sounds like he has answers, he's just not here.
Okay.
I'll second your motion.
Okay. Motion made, and second, all those who favor, give their consent, saying aye. Ayes have, so...
Okay.
Okay. And before we get in, go ahead, Helen.
Want more visitors and want something else?
Well, before we get into that, I give an explanation here. This young lady over here from the news media asked me whether there's going to be anything brought up or anything on the agenda, and I said there wasn't anything in regards to Mr. Pickles, but I am prepared to offer a statement. All of a sudden, it becomes a live issue again, and it is now evident that Pickles has been enrolled in an ARD program. Upon finding that out, I contacted the independent counsel today, and I had discussion with the independent counsel today, and I had discussion with independent, with the township solicitor. And the independent counsel and the solicitor at the present time are having a meeting in regards to this to update the township, so that it can be seen whether there's any action that we need to take in any way, shape, or form. And that's where we're at. That's why Rich is not here, and has been appointed contact, the chairman of the board become to the point of time that I contacted the independent counsel to see where we go from here.
Okay.
Thank you. When will that meeting be? The meeting with the solicitor and independent counsel?
Taking place now.
Oh, okay.
Okay. That's why Rich isn't here.
Henry, if I may...
Sure.
Who is the independent counsel?
Scott Kramer.
And when was Mr. Kramer appointed independent counsel? November, December last year?
December, I thought it was.
Was it December, I believe?
It wasn't January.
It was...
I'm pretty sure it was...
It said if needed.
If needed, yes.
And I brought the question up today, is it needed? And so I raised a question.
So, just for clarity, then, Rich Wagner, our solicitor, is also the attorney for Chief Pickles, according to court documents?
He represents, yes, he's, his firm represents him.
And Mr. Kramer represents the township?
In this particular matter, yes.
And are we aware that Mr. Kramer, back in 2012, was charged, arrested and charged for a DUI, which has, which he had gotten the RD program, which expired August of 2013, so his record has been expunged?
Mm-hmm.
Is it not also, according to court documents, that our solicitor, which also represents Mr. Pickles, also represented Mr. Kramer in the same, in a DUI case, which resulted in an ARD program?
That's more than I could tell you.
I have court documents here that show that Mr. Wagner is the attorney and his firm for Mr. Kramer. I do believe at this time here, I believe that is a conflict of interest. I believe that we need to excuse Mr. Kramer as our independent counsel, seek the district attorney for a list of names to be able to select a new independent counsel.
Okay.
So I make a motion that we dismiss Mr. Kramer and seek new independent counsel.
Question on the motion. Would it be more proper to refer this matter to our solicitor and ask for his legal advice on whether or not Mr. Kramer needs to be dismissed?
Let me see here. Mr. Wagner, on the record, has made a statement referencing to, as of December 5th, as the township solicitor, but yet he also mentions that he is representing Mr., although Mr. Wagner, the township solicitor, is listed as the attorney. It goes on to say that Chairman Holman has stated that Penn Township Supervisor said that only Pickles is still employed by the township and has taken action as a result of advice from Richard Wagner, our solicitor.
I believe that's according to his statements here, that it was premature, because the guy wasn't found guilty or judged of anything yet, it was premature to enter into that.
Okay. But he was, as of December 5th, a month before going everything, taking everything over to, bounding over to trial, Mr. Wagner was representing Mr. Pickles and also stated here as representing the township. And these are news articles that are found on Penn Live. So therefore, I think that there is a conflict of interest on behalf of the township. I believe that we could be opening ourselves to liability issues, and I really think for the best interest of our citizens and our township that we seek legal advice from the district attorney, as in giving us a list of names that we can appoint independent counsel.
Okay. In the meeting that I had with him today, Brian, he said if there's any discussion any different than what I had to say tonight, I was supposed to contact him, and I will do that immediately. I fear also to put the township in a position where you pass the judgment that someone's guilty that hasn't been found guilty of anything. And so we have to be careful there on that side by...
Okay. But I am going to quote a member of this board that has made the statement that if you need an attorney, you must be guilty. Is that correct, sir?
If you need an attorney...
You must be guilty.
It just depends in the situation.
That's not what he said when he made that statement, Mr. Holman.
I made that openly here.
Yeah, yes, you did. Not in a meeting, you made it in an after meeting, after everybody was gone, and we had a discussion.
Okay.
And it was non-executive discussion.
It was a casual remark made going down the hall, okay?
No, it was here at this table, sir.
It was at this table, after, after it was over. Meeting was over, and you know what we were talking about, okay? And the Holman yard. I will assure you, Mr. Peters, you'll never hear any comments like that from me again. There will be no comments like that, because you were right along in that conversation 100 percent...
Listening.
Fully involved, okay?
Listening to the conversation.
And I made the statement in regards to something that you were sitting there talking and you wanted to hear, and if that's what you're here for, then I do not share information by golly.
That's not what I'm here for. What I'm here for is the integrity of this board.
Okay. And the integrity of the board is I'm going back to where I stand, to where we're at. It's a two-sided coin. Tonight, I made my statement, I stand on that, and that's where it needs to be until there's further contact with those two individuals in regards to this matter.
Okay. Then I'd like to make a motion again, that we will go ahead and suspend our agreement, our contract with Mr. Kramer as independent counsel, and advise at this point here that we seek the district attorney, which is the higher authority in this county, to seek other independent counsel options.
Okay. Motion's been made. Do I hear a second? Motion's made, calling for a second. Motion's been made, calling for the third time for a second. Hearing done, motion dies for lack of a second. As soon as I get necessary information back, I will share with the three supervisors.
What about this man?
I don't know whether I'll get back, back tonight or not, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay, now the rest of recognition of visitors, Helen.
Mr. Gauss.
Gauss, and this one.
Linda Gauss.
Nothing.
Randy, anything else?
Nothing.
Cece?
Nothing.
Jesse Boyer?
Nothing at this time.
Stanley? What, he disappeared then?
I had a question write to me on Monday evening before all this hell of blue broke loose. I was sitting here thinking, should I bring it up to him or not? But I'm here, and somebody asked me to ask this question. Does Officer Pickle have a contract with Penn Township for his services? And after contract, is he just an employee like everybody else?
He's hired and appointed by the supervisor board as chief of police, you know what I'm saying? His wages is set by the agreement between Duncan and us together, as per se, a legitimate contractor, contract, I don't know, but he would you clip? No?
Okay. Thank you. And what is going on with our cable franchise tax negotiations?
Being negotiated at the present time. Little reluctance to move forward or not. We're taking a look at what's owed to us in the back. I think that's as much as I can say, and they're trying to require as much force as what they can. But the last conversation we had, they figured that's what, four months down the road? I think that was somewhere over there, thought that I'd hope to have it resolved within a timeframe like that. Maybe not, Stanley.
Okay.
Thank you. Stanley, I also would like to offer my condolences to Bruce Rogers' family, and also to the Mutzy Ball Store family for the loss of Bruce. We lost a, we lost a good man, and I just wanted to send my condolences to you and family.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Lee?
What's the status for the bridge project Duncan, going into Duncan?
They pre-pend out to tell us. Anybody know any more on that?
It's out for bid, I believe, until the beginning of March.
Yeah.
At that point, they'll select the contract for March 3rd, Monday. I was thinking it was eight, eight, but beginning of March.
I mean, as far as what all they promised to do, yet they haven't got back with us as far as the line painting or nothing. We haven't heard anything.
No.
I mean, they're kind of like, when they get to that point, I think they'll, they'll be in contact with us.
Good question, if I may.
Yes.
Are they, are they still planning the three months?
That's what they claim, or that's what they claim, Jesse.
Okay. That's, that's great. Are there provisions made for a fire truck to get out of town to the lower end of the township?
Those routes and everything have already been walked, talked about with Penn Dot in regards to what's going to take place at that time, as far as getting the fire trucks and emergency vehicles in and out of town.
I didn't know if the fire company might stage extra vehicles out of Bloomfield Road there at that facility to save time perhaps.
Those routes and et cetera have already been discussed as how they're going to get them in and out of town. We did have a meeting and walked the whole, whole project, but...
I have four questions. I'm all on time, or answer, or you want me to give you one?
One at a time.
Help yourself.
The snow plowing issue.
Mm-hmm.
What is this material you folks are putting down for anti-skid? It's got to be the dirtiest stuff where it's dry. When it's wet, it's a mud, and it accumulates to the lowest places.
Mm-hmm.
When they plowed the road, they left two feet of snow at the end of the road, and they had the ice, it froze like a line stood in the rock. When they got to the bottom of our road, they stopped plowing, they backed up the road around, they turned their spreader off, they put any anti-skid at the end of the road, the length of the truck, and you let it pull out, you just sat there and spun. The second question is, do you have any plans on doing anything with the shoulders right here that you're holding water? Third question, when you go onto our webpage, it says if you want to find out what's going on in the township, you can check over minutes. The last one for supervisors was May of 13.
That's true. I have to update that.
Do you have, put them in now?
They're going to be in by Friday.
Okay.
That was one of the things that fell behind.
Okay.
And then, I guess, with the police force, apparently I wasn't attending these meetings when we started the police force. So what constituted the need for a police force? We have a population of 3,000. I think state police will cover you free of charge. And I think we would have the same coverage we have now, but instead, we're spending tens of thousands of dollars for cruisers, for equipment, and now we're paying for people fees. I have nothing against Mr. Pickles, and his number, but our chief stood, had a night out one night, and in his speech was a comment, "Do not drink and drive." So where is he? I'm thinking for him to do it. I think a police chief needs to have a little higher regard, respect, whatever. I think they should be sitting in a chat.
Okay. I appreciate your comments. First off, I'd like to address the snow plowing out there and the stuff that we put on the ground. I'd say right now, for a woman one, you don't like the black stuff, and Stanley told me he loved it. So...
I'll tell you, you walk out the mailbox, you back into the driveway, you drag out into the driveway, you walk out the mailbox.
Something that this township gets, that's no cost to us, we don't need to pay for it. It does have a big effect on getting things off quicker with a minimum amount of salt, which is very expensive, and which we had three weeks delay even getting salt this year, although we were low, we were adequate for, to the end of the year, but we finally got salt after three weeks. The anti-skid that you got out there, yes, it is approved, it's approved and allowed by Penn Dot, so we use it because it costs us nothing. Put all salt on there or to buy anti-skid yet, well, that's hardly in the budget at the present time, when this is, this is available for free. So that is why we use it, and there's those who like it, there's those who don't. I know in the spring of the year, when the rain comes, it worsens in the way, worsens it in the gutters. We don't have the stones, we don't have the anti-skid at the intersections where people come down and then complain, and we're out there sweeping up the intersections. That's one of the big advantages of it, short order it disappears. The other question as to snow plowing out there, I tried to address that. I will say one thing, yes, I hit to have some complaints about snow. The first snow that was so wet and so heavy, you could only plow so much of it so far. I did receive some complaints, you plowed it too high. I can't see out across my yard to the road. I can't help how high it gets, or where it goes, or what we got to do with it. And then the temperature changed, and I couldn't control that, and what was plowed off the edge of the road froze, and it froze quick, and then you could no longer move it with the plows. I experienced the same thing as the state. I was down here at the end of Morgan Street down here, and the drains down there, and the state had the same thing, and opened those drains down there to help out the residents down there, which were state drains, not mine. But nevertheless, I went down and done it and moved them, and it was so hard getting that ice scraped and beat out down there to get those drains open right there by the legion, that Steve and I spent a good bit of time while Tom was hauling anti-skid to replace our, what's it called, getting that cleaned up. We also experienced the same thing up at Stanley's up here. When we got in against the curb, we finally exposed and it found all the drains now still, which you forgot where they were, and so was I. But they froze over, and they got that wet stuff laid on top of them and froze. There was no peeling them off. I was up there with the backhoe, tried to scrape it loose from the road, absolutely couldn't break it loose. So we dug it up with a, what we could to get the water across there with a digger bar and with the shovels, it got enough open until it did fall enough to get the rest of it. That part of it out there, I'd have to discuss with you, what's the problem with the shoulders? I mean, shoulders, I mean, a lot of places we have shoulders that should be cut back, but people have made lawns out of them right out to the edge of the road. We went and cut that grass back to run the drainage back where it is, they're unhappy. And so it's a double-edged sword for us that are out there trying to maintain the roads, because we try to do our best by golly to keep the people's places cosmetically. If I took every 33-foot right away in this township and rolled it back and put the gutters where they belong, you'd see this building in here filled with people ready to hang all of us, even though we have the right to create that drainage. I've had numerous complaints by golly from people about the plowing. You know, you got an icy spot out here. Most of the problems is, and some of them are, and a lot of them were, and we addressed them as quick as we could. People that after we're done plowing, they shovel their driveways, they push them down, they push them across the other side. They don't push them off. And I get a call after everybody went home, Mr. Holman, the township road's not plowed, the driver did it. No one out, an individual, private owner pushed it across and left it set. Every one of those driveways that came down, every one of them out here, starting at the farm at Gambers, melted, run out on the road, and was sheer ice the next morning, which I was there to get senders on them as quick as could. Every drain on those four houses in a row, farther out at Gambers, going down with hell, all drained off of their driveway and out and down across the road. We do the best we can controlling it. I can't help that it melts, and I can't help that it freezes. But I'll tell you one thing, I've worked with the school down here. I have no complaints from the school, from Roar Bus, and they have been absolutely satisfied with what's been done with the roads down here as far as keeping the, what's it called? Keeping the roads open and keeping them available for the buses. So we've met everything down here without any complaint from them. I do work with Mr. Carr down here, and I do work with Roar Bus down here. If they have complaints, I need to know about them. We're there as quick as we can get there if there's a problem. And that's as much as I can say. It's not an easy job out there trying to keep that much snow off the road and in cold weather and whatnot, so we do the best we can.
Well, but if you, if you can make the first pass and get that plowed, why can't you get the left edge of your blade in the center of the road and at least clear the road instead of letting two feet of snow on the roadway? We had animals stuck. And then the other problem is created, all the water from the upper end runs down, and because shoulder is higher than what, it'll be swirly with my driveway, they can't go anywhere except down my driveway.
No, I'll invite you out to the shed tomorrow to take a look at our snow plows. The snow plows out there, that have the overhang and a big sweep over there, the cutting edge is in here about two foot. So we can't get to the edge without taking people's mailboxes, trees, and shrubbery, and branches and stuff that they plow with that type of a plow. We try our best to get as close. I come to mailbox, we have to swerve out around it. Now, that's not a straight plow there, it's one of the big ones with the sweeps, so the big trucks that plow those roads out there, I'll be glad to show you just how close you can get to a mailbox and how close you can't get at the same time to get to the edge of the road. I remember a lady supervisor one time complained to me about that very same thing, until I took her along and showed her exactly why you can't roll it back at those places.
That's true.
That's true, isn't it?
Well, in my driveway down, there are no mailboxes.
Okay.
And you've got six and a half foot right in there. And you've got a six and a half foot right of your building.
And so you.
And if you plow your shoulder in your six and a half foot right way, and you tear off some of the grass that goes clear out of the road, I'm not going to bitch at you because that's your right way.
Okay. Well, you're one of a few then. I'll remember that. Let me tell you, I'll remember that. I'll remember that.
You were there this summer, and you expected driveway that they were putting in with the swell. They had the swell, apparently approved it. But once it gets past the driveway, you've got six, eight inches of shoulder up. Where's the guy? Was that on the road, across the road, everything compared to that? Yes.
And that's a process of people not knowing that they need a permit to pave that come in, and we have that problem all over.
They put the swell in, but the swell doesn't do any good if the shoulder is eight inches higher than what the swell is.
Well, you'll have to show me out there where, why the water can't get in the swell.
Well, you have to look out of you.
Okay. I did answer out there to that cause at that time, okay? Tell them to get a permit and take a look at it. I'll be glad to walk with you, Mr. Fickers. Anything else?
Oh, his last question was about, I think, police.
The issue with police, with other municipalities under ten thousand, they're just mailing their police force. It's a new concept. Because the state police will provide the same coverage.
And for how long are they going to do that before they're going to start charges? That's a big issue, a big consideration.
Right now, but we had this grant for the clicker ticket. I would leave the house at corridor six in the morning, still in my schoolroom. Every morning I would see a police officer somewhere in that long room, I was fifteen. Since that grant ended, I have not seen a police officer more than fifteen.
I would offer you to come in and sit down and take a look at our numbers. When we had one part timer and one full timer. We had a budget in the township for a hundred and thirty thousand dollars with no revenues coming in, but we were spending that every year in this police department here in Penn Township. Right here. That's what was taking place, Mr. Fickers. Okay. The need arise, and the need was there for a police department. You now have twenty-four seven for just a little bit more money. And I will tell you one thing, today I got a phone call, which I wasn't going to bring it up tonight, from the son of a lady down here last night or the other night at one o'clock in the morning. Said to thank the police officers, they were the very first ones there. Wheeze Ellenberger had a heart attack. He's in the Holy Spirit Hospital. And when you get the compliments there, that there's someone's out there, and the need was met right away, they were there. Were you on the call, Craig?
I was not.
Okay. Well, the police officers, they got a call in, they were immediately there, they got the help. She is presently in the Holy Spirit Hospital. She's stabilized, doing well, but she had a very serious heart attack. I got a phone call today thanking me for that service because they were there immediately. Now, and I could go over with everything I know about the availability of the state police, how they get here, et cetera, and I'm not going to get into that. We have what we have, which I think is good, or I wouldn't have supported it, and I think it's fair for the money. And you have twenty-four seven, you have people out here in the street all the time. A lot of people calling, "Thank you," and other ones by golly still don't want it until they need it. Then they want it immediately. Why don't you have a police officer out there? I went through that for years when we only had part timers. Why don't we have more? I'll leave it at that. That's my answer. I'd like to move on with the meeting.
Can I clarify just one part of the question you mentioned about the legal fees? How much does the township spend on legal fees related to this?
Not a penny.
Not a penny?
Not a penny to date. Not a penny to date.
Okay. So Mr. Wiedner did not represent?
Pardon?
Yeah, the town solicitor was not representing?
Did not build through hearing, ma'am.
Okay.
I mean, that's separation, and that's why that is separated at the present time. So that that can't be said or isn't done.
And I just was, he's about one last thing, which was that I think you said when you made your statement earlier, if he was suspended, that would be like passing judgment and saying that he was guilty of the crime he was allegedly caused.
Well, I'm not saying that. If you sat here before, he has, it was always my opinion, and I think everybody else's opinion. Do you want to be judged guilty, suspend him, get rid of him, this and that, or lose your job for something that makes an accusation for you that you've never been proven of?
He did just get sentenced, though.
Pardon?
He pled to two misdemeanor counts, and that's the ARD.
Well, that I don't know.
And he's on probation.
And where'd you get that info?
We got it. Yeah.
If he went into the program, wouldn't that be already?
Court document.
I don't know that much about the program.
The information from court documents was that he's on twelve months probation, must perform forty hours of community service, pay sixteen hundred dollars in fines. And that was from hearing on February sixth. But then we just posted that last night.
I offered all I know about it tonight, ma'am. I can't really say much more.
Okay, so you're just waiting on?
Yes.
The town solicitor now?
Yes.
Will he present his decision or findings in the meeting tonight?
Hardly, probably tonight until getting back here tonight, you know, I mean, if he does, well, take the call.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Luke? Where'd you go? I guess not. Mr. Binner?
I'm here about Rook Road, but I guess that's already been addressed.
Bob Johnson?
Nothing this time. See what happens next.
Craig? Yeah, you're not on here, Craig.
Sure am.
Oh, yeah.
You missed me.
I did.
You didn't want to hear what I had to say?
Yeah, save the best for last.
A nice haircut like that, you missed me.
I do want to thank Henry specifically and the township crew for the response, the quick response. When we did in fact have an ambulance stuck, we actually, we had two stuck, one in our driveway in front of the bays and one on Sherman Drive. Henry was there very quickly and got the ambulance unstuck. Henry's son, Jeff, is our contracted, had no charge, snow removal folks for our parking lot area. So they were both there pretty quickly. Unfortunately, that's one of those things we had when we had that kind of weather. You can't always predict even the state roads how well they're covered. Also, thank you to the fire department, Duncan and New Buffalo Fire Departments both. And I copied Helen on that correspondence via email.
Yes.
Okay. That during the forecast for the four to twelve-plus inches, depending on who you listen to, of snow here two weeks ago, we did have it set up or pre-planned through the county for an automatic dispatch of fire department assets for four-wheel drive, both in Watts Township, New Buffalo, with New Buffalo Fire Company, and then Penn Township, Duncan Borough, and Watts Township, or Weetville Township for Duncan Fire Company. That seemed to work well. We didn't really run into a situation where we were without access, but we had the resources there, the extra lifting help, the four-wheel drive, and geeks we did. So we appreciate their responses as well. We do also want to thank, you know, the police department that we're glad to see them on EMS calls. That doesn't always happen, so we're glad when the police department does arrive on EMS calls. Certainly when they're out in the car, they are closer when we have crews coming from home or waiting to assemble on station. So we do appreciate those instances where that happens. Finally, we're working on our subscriptions for the 2014, 2015 year. Trying to finalize those prices that normally goes out early April. The term runs from May one to April thirtieth. It's, I'm not sure exactly why that term is the way it is, but it's been that way for quite some time, and it seems to work. So those prices and that publication is being finalized, as well as our end of year 2013 document for our final report and everything. So if there's any questions in the interim until that report is released, please let us know. As always, thank you for your ongoing support and the township and the supervisors' anticipated support for this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Craig.
President of Penn Township appreciates the feedback this year. That's part of our discussion. I don't know that answer at this point.
Now, Stanley.
I have one more question. This is directed to you, Clifford. Officer Pickle's being on probation in Dolphin County in the ARD program. I'm pretty sure in Perry County, if you're in the ARD program, you can still have your firearms. What happens in Dolphin County?
I do not know.
You worked in Dolphin County before, that's why I directed it to you.
Yeah, but it seemed that everyone I arrested in Dolphin County was carrying illegal firearms. So they shouldn't have had one to begin with?
Or, you know, if you don't feel like the law is going to.
Probation.
Or probation.
I don't know the answer.
All right. Thank you.
That's all, Henry. That's all on the list.
Okay, that's it. Okay.
If I may, with reference to that, Stan, I am going to request that we do a write-down with the Dolphin County probation and District Attorney's Office to get a copy of the conditions of Chief Pickle's ARD program. Because I do understand that the judge can, can not deviate, but the judge can make conditions referencing to what you're talking about.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay. Invoiced expenditures before you.
Nothing out of the ordinary, just normal bills. We did do a transfer from Oars Town to Plague It and also another small transfer to the parking rec checking to cover their checks for the month.
Okay. And before the invoiced expenditures? No other questions? Call for motion to approve.
I move it. Go ahead, Brian.
Please.
Yep, I make the motion to accept the invoices and expenditures.
Okay, motion made. We'll hear a second.
Question on the motion, is that also maybe pay the invoices?
Yes, it also have to pay the invoices.
I second the motion.
Okay, motion made the second. All those with favor give their consent of saying aye. Ayes have it, so ordered. Treasuries report.
Again, it's just the usual bills.
Oh, usual monies.
Usual monies, sorry.
We did get our EIT and LST payments. Our LST was higher than last year at this time. And our EIT is a couple thousand within what it was last year. Above what we got last year.
Okay, thank you, Helen.
I move that the treasuries report be accepted subject to audit.
Okay, I'll second. Motion made the second. All those with favor give their consent of saying aye. Ayes have it, so ordered.
One additional item, there's a CD that is up for renewal. It is a parking rec CD. And we've already discussed this with Karen Tilkins, and they would like to renew it at Marysville where it's currently held. But they would like to change it from a six-month term to a twelve-month term.
At point three percent.
Okay. I make a motion that we concur with the request of the rec board, keep it with Marysville, and change it to a twelve-month term.
I second the motion.
Okay, motion made the second. All those with favor give their consent of saying aye. Ayes have it, so ordered. Okay. Minutes, January sixth, 2014. January sixth, 2014 also, conditional use, recommend, and January the twenty-ninth. Let's wish the board for approval of those minutes.
I had one question on the January twenty-ninth minutes. On page three, the next to last paragraph, the bottom. Supervisor Peters asked Sean Schultz to explain the long-term financial gains that could be a burden on the township. I'm having trouble understanding the meaning of that sentence.
The attorney that represented, Mr. Schultz, stated that he as a township supervisor himself, stated that in the minutes, that there is a burden on the townships far above the revenue that comes in. So I was asking him for clarification of that. Apparently the notes weren't fully clear on that conversation.
So we wouldn't be talking about long-term financial gains if there's concern about reduced income, correct?
Well, that's my question to him. What was the reference to gains or losses?
I move the minutes be accepted as presented.
Okay, motion made. I'll second. All those with favor give their consent of saying aye. Ayes have it, so ordered. Have your highway report. I'd like to announce it on the twenty-ninth, which is going to be on the chicken barbecue. We will also do our annual road survey that morning. Helen, it needs to be advertised.
Done.
Done, and for any other business, okay? We meet here, open the meeting, and go out and take a look at the roads for the year. Okay, enjoy the chicken barbecue. Not too much to report on the highway department, other than main activity's been plowing snow and replenishment of our skid and salt. Like I said, our salt was low but adequate. We had inquiries from the state wanting to know where we stood, and I felt that we had enough to get us through the year, and we did. It took us three weeks to get the delivery of salt. We got seventy-five ton in out here, met our quota that we required for, et cetera. I will say that during that action, you know, that we have with all the snow and trying to stay after, we did have some truck repairs. We had a brake line on the five-fifty that rubbed at one of the clamps, went across the rear end and rubbed through and lost hydraulic fluid. Took that off, replaced that out there, got a new steel hose and double-flared it and put it back together. Air supply on the four-eight thousand coming from the compressor to the receiver tank wore through also at the clamp, so it was bolted on to the side. We repaired that to keep us going, and one was ordered, came out of South Carolina, received it the other day, is now installed. Bearing on the spreader box went bad. Now we have spare ones out there. They get a lot of salt in them. Was replaced the next day after that. And cleaning up our backhoe and our equipment for the spring, we take the covers off of them and to worsen out all the salt and stuff underneath them to make sure that there is maintenance on them. And there's a small leak on the cap of the radiator on the John Deere, starting to weep out through. Been from past neglect, it wasn't clean. Salt has eat through it, finally got to the point it's leaking. It's serviceable, usable, but we need to be aware that I've already got the name of where we sent the radiator to for the repair on the chipper. And the hoe had to have downtime for a couple of days here before we get into the spring to repair that radiator. It's not a matter, it will have to come out to get to where it's at. Small engines that we have in the shed and all our engines, we've changed the oil in them and filters, tamper, the tar bucket. Chain saws have been cleaned and ready for another year. And so we are looking forward to spring out here, trying to get forward. The snow has kept us from getting up to Ashland, I mean Ashmar, to take a look at the width of the road up there with the liquid fuel man to generate a number for, a work order number for that particular job up there that we plan to, plan to pave this year. I will say that the snow out there come down, got in the heavy snow, got one of our rain spouts out there and pulled the fascia off. So we got a little repair on the garage building out there to be fixed. We'll take care of that just as soon as decent weather's there. I will say that the, we got through a lot of snow plowing with very, very little breakdowns, or very, very minor incidents. Sometimes it's great to have that third truck in there. When the one went down with brakes, we got in the other one. So we're trying to keep ourselves prepared out there the best we can. And that's all I have on the highway report, but I am looking forward, it was contacted by Century Link. He wants to meet with me on Watch Drive, the same place where we had planned on putting new culverts in. And they got a bad phone line back there. But they're willing to wait with us, and maybe I'll step up and put those culvert pipes in. I've got one at Schoolhouse that's important to get in also, to meet some state requirements. And those. And, and those back there to work with the phone company. So we've got our work laid out for us. Not sure what timeframe is a priority. But CenturyLink has contacted me, but they haven't got back with us to go look at the bridge.
Not yet.
And it doesn't make sense for them to bury a new line and then us come along and dig it up. So they would like us to put the culverts in first. So we'll get, get on that, as soon. That's all I have underneath the highway report. All the stone contracts, yes. Stone contracts. Time for us to bid on the quantities for our stone.
We normally put that out for bid in March.
In March, okay. We need to do those for what we have. And I'll get with you, Helen, on the quantities, okay?
Permission to advertise, once we got that done?
Pardon?
Permission to advertise?
Yep, permission to advertise. And I'll give you some quantities.
The motion for that?
We do that. Do I hear a second to the motion for permission to advertise?
I'll second the motion.
Motion made with a second. All those in favor give their consent of saying aye. Ayes have it, so ordered. Penn Township Planning Commission?
They did not meet. We did not have a quorum. And there was nothing on the agenda.
Okay. Zoning report?
You have it before you. He talked to Mrs. Hands about a barbecue pit alongside of the trailer that she wants to put in. And he told her that she would need another conditional use because that was not part of the original conditional use.
Okay. Storage Enforcement Officer, report?
Nothing.
Nothing, okay. Penn Township Parking Rec Board, report?
You have it before you. They did contact them Ken &amp; Fire Company, and they agreed to help them with the barbecue.
With the barbecue, okay. Penn Township and municipal authority. Try Company Planning Module, before us?
Yes. The authority has said that they do have capacity. I'm just getting authorization to sign it and ship it out to DEP.
Okay, I make a motion that we grant Helen the authority to sign that and get it on its way to DEP. Do I hear a second?
I second it.
Okay, motion made with a second. All those in favor give their consent of saying aye. Ayes have it, so ordered. Secretaries report?
Okay. Workers Comp, MRM Trust, Workers Comp and Property and Liability Trust are both asking for either a proxy or someone to attend their meetings. In the past, we have done proxies.
Okay, I make a motion, Helen, that we do the proxy thing the same because we know none of them in reality. That's been the past.
For both? Your motions for both?
Yes.
I second the motion.
Motion made with a second. All those in favor give their consent of saying aye. Ayes have it, so ordered.
Okay, the next thing I have is, last month you wanted a policy established for boots purchased. I have done that with the limit of $75 per pair of boots per, per person. I did not state that it was only highway because also the police do purchase boots also.
Okay.
So it's everybody.
Okay.
This is the draft. If you want to look at it or adopt the resolution.
Okay. What's the wish of the board? Look at it, table, or adopt the resolution?
I move we adopt the resolution.
Okay, motion made that we adopt the resolution. Do I hear a second?
I second it.
Motion made with a second. All those in favor give their consent of saying aye. Ayes have it, so ordered.
Okay, the next thing is a, to get the comprehensive plan recorded, Rich said to do a resolution. Adopt the resolution, then record the resolution. Lot cheaper. This is, I sent it to him. He didn't get back to me on it, whether it's okay or not. The main question I would have is, you made the motion to adopt the comprehensive plan on October 30th, so that's what I put down, that it went in and was adopted. So review it? Adopt it?
I move to table till we hear from Rich.
Okay.
Okay, motion made to table. I'll second. All those in favor give their consent of saying aye.
Aye.
Oars Town Signatory Resolutions.
Okay, there are three resolutions for the general checking, parking rec checking, and savings account, to change the signatories. Take CC off and put Mr. Peters on. We just need to adopt those.
I make a motion that we adopt the resolution on the three. On the signatory resolution. Do I hear a second?
I second the motion.
Motion made with a second. All those in favor give their consent of saying aye. Ayes have it, so ordered.
And the last thing I have to report is, I got with Henry, and we go through CPAC, which is Central Pennsylvania Energy something or other, for diesel fuel, heating fuel, and the police gas. We put in how much gallons we think we're going to use. They go out for bid with us and other people, and then they'll come back with the final bid thing. We sent that information out yesterday as required.
Regards to our diesel fuel. For those interested, we changed. We now have a breakdown on it instead of it all coming out of my budget to show where the different categories go. And it's a...
Spread count between highway, police, and department.
We increased the amount of gallons that we bid on this year by 500 gallons because we've got into a little heavier, burn a little more fuel, although we're under last year.
Yes.
Yes, we were underneath what we had, our proposal, last year. So at that, we only made an increase for the requirements. We take what we need, and that's it. Okay. Engineers report?
You have it before you.
Okay. Max called me today and said, "Is it much on the report, Henry? Does it matter whether I'm there or not?" I said, "Well, I appreciate your consideration for not coming up." And he said, "Save you some money." And I said, "After the snow, we could use it." So that's why Max is not here tonight. And I appreciate his consideration for not attending the meeting. Police report, Clifford?
You have the activity and the income report in front of you. The only thing I would add is, the last couple of weeks, we've been very busy with accidents. Actually, one morning, 1115 became a sheet of ice, a big ice rink. And at one time, on 1115, we had eight accidents at one time, making it very difficult for us to get there, the fire department to get there, and the ambulance crews to get there. Other than that, things are progressing well?
Okay. That was the worst experience that we had with that ice. It showed up for an hour and 45 minutes, two hours, and was gone. And we tried to accommodate and get on the roads immediately. And I was being called by our police department to jump here, jump there. We did the best we could. So no, no bad accidents within Penn Township.
We had a couple up on the Quarter Mile Bridge. Other than that, everything else was just vehicle damage.
Okay. Okay, solicitors report?
Just on second. Chief, I got, or Assistant Chief, I got a question for you. When our officers are out investigating a call, after doing their investigation and following their reports, do they have the decision to follow the charges? Or do they consult with you and Chief Pickles, depending on the situation?
Yes and yes.
Yes and yes.
They have, upon completion of their investigation, if they are comfortable with their investigation, they're comfortable with the charges that they believe have occurred, they go ahead and file the charges.
Or charges not occurred?
Or not occurred, either way. The chief and I are always available for them to either come see us or call us, run the scenario by us to get our opinion. But ultimately, it is at the officer's discretion what charges are filed.
Okay. Is there ever a time that it could be called into question and you send another officer out to investigate the same, the same incident?
Yes, that could happen.
Okay. With the same result or different result, or?
It could be the same results. It could be different results.
Okay. All right. A question here. I've received several complaints from residences of the borough because the borough doesn't answer their calls or doesn't answer their questions. They always refer them to our police department because it's Penn Township's police department when they have a complaint. There's been several burn ordinance concerns in the borough where residents have complained. Every time that the residents complain, the officers that respond, respond to, "Well, we don't know what the ordinance is, so we don't know what to enforce." So, okay, just, all right. So today, I called the borough, and within a matter of technical difficulties with their internet service, I was able to obtain their burn ordinance within 24 hours. Okay? So my question is if, if I have enough time to be able to get the burn ordinance, and we have one of our officers call and leave an e, or leave a voicemail on a recording in a residence, in one of the Duncan and Borough residence's home, stating that they're, they should be careful, from one of our officers, that they should be careful what they post on Facebook about how they bad-mouth Penn Township officers.
Is there a question, sir?
Okay.
I mean, I...
Okay.
Do you want me to address the burn ordinance?
Well, what I'd like to address is the whole procedure. If I got it within 24 hours, and our officers keep responding to burn ordinance, supposedly violations, why this information hasn't been obtained earlier? Why does it take weeks and months for them to get it?
First of all, a copy of all the Duncan and Borough ordinances that we enforce are in the police office. We do not enforce all the Duncan and Borough ordinances. We do not enforce any ordinance that is enforced by their codes enforcement officer. And the burn ordinance is under the codes enforcement officer. The only ordinances that we would enforce are ones that would come under the criminal section of the ordinances.
Okay. So we need to make sure that our officers are aware of that so they refer the residents to the borough again for them to, to their enforcement officer. Because the officers keep getting called out for a burn ordinance. Would be easily resolved. We could waste, we wouldn't be wasting our time going on a burn ordinance call. If the resident, if our officers were aware of the procedure, they're taking off the road or something else to go respond to a burn ordinance violation, which we don't enforce anyway, but we keep responding to them. But that information is never relayed to the residents that they should take it to the enforcement officer instead of the police. And I know this is the difficulties that we sometimes have relating two governments working side by side.
Well, I have found that the Penn Township and the Duncan and Borough governments have been working very well together. I'm a little confused because if a resident would call into the borough office, the borough office knows which ordinances we enforce, which to give to the codes enforcement officer. From what I'm hearing, I believe the problem stems with my officers not realizing that the burn ordinance is to be enforced by the codes enforcement officer.
Correct, and that the information would be relayed to the residents that way. That way, our officers wouldn't have to keep getting, responding to something that isn't necessary for us to respond to. We could be out on the road doing whatever, enforcing other, other laws in the borough and the township, whatever have you. But my question, though, is too, is it proper conduct for an officer to be responding to a Facebook post to a resident, warning them they ought to be careful what they post on Facebook about Penn Township officers? And leaving it on the voicemail?
Well, I'm going to speak, not about the specific, this specific incident because I don't have the specifics. I'm going to speak in a generality. The officer should not be commenting about what's on Facebook. And the officer should not be leaving anything, if it is negative, on a message machine. But if you could, I'd like you to provide me with more particulars than what we have here today.
And I will obtain that information for you, sir. Absolutely will. Second question here also. I believe it was on March the 16th, approximately between 12:00 and 2:00. It was a Sunday. A officer was summoned to a local restaurant, particularly Zatarelli's, about a complaint of a resident up Penn Township upon delivery of their food was not satisfied with the, with the, their preparation of their food. And, and...
She didn't like the chicken wings.
She didn't like the chicken wings. And she came, after the delivery person went to hand her the wings, she began striking at him with a knife. In the process of striking at him with a knife, that the actual bag that he was carrying the product in actually was sliced open and spilled onto the ground. The officer went out and investigated, properly investigated, and then ended up calling the individual, telling them that there was no charges going to be filed due to that resident was on medication.
There is a little bit more to it than that.
Okay.
And there's a little bit, and the reason I know it was chicken wings is because I read the report. The report is a little bit different from what you're saying about this knife.
Okay.
And the person involved does have a long laundry list of problems. So the officer took all that into consideration and handled the call by telling the pizza place not to deliver there anymore and telling her not to call the police base and bother them. Because even after which, she was still calling the pizza place and bothering them.
Six o'clock that evening.
Yeah.
Yes. Now, I do have a concern because in the presence of the victim, in this case, it was presented to him that they did do a little bit of background check on her. It's all that she did have a history, like you just stated.
Very well.
But are they aware of the history of this individual?
My officer?
Yes. Because I have here a Penn Live documentation here stating that this individual is actually awaiting sentencing for aggravated assault on a state trooper for whelling a knife at him and resisting arrest.
That could very well be...
Oh, it is. I have it right here in front of me.
Well...
Okay.
Mr. Peters, I will tell you that my opinion of Penn Live is not very high.
Okay.
And I'll explain why. I was, before coming here, I was a city officer for 30 years.
Okay.
We dealt with the Patriot News quite a bit. And the stories that were put in the Patriot News on incidents that were I was at were nowhere near the same. So I don't put much credibility in Penn Live.
Okay.
Now, if, if there's a docket sheet or something else, that's a different story.
Oh, I actually have, I actually have the information right here. And I don't have the officer's report in detail. But I have the charges. I have the disposition of the charges. Some of them were dropped. But there was a, there was a conviction upon a guilty plea. And the individual is waiting, waiting. So my question is, is that the officer had access to this information that night? He quoted that she has a history.
Mm-hmm, correct. Because we've arrested her.
What's that?
We've arrested her.
Okay. All right. So, nothing against officers, absolutely none. But what makes a state trooper's officer more valuable than a delivery pizza man?
None whatsoever, but what I'm saying is, I don't know the facts of the case with the trooper.
Mm-hmm.
But I do, I have read the officer's report on what happened that night, and it does not rise to the fact that she should have been arrested. She did not attempt to stab this guy.
Whaling a knife at somebody? Tearing the bag, cutting the bag, when he went to hand it her, cut the bag, and the food dropped onto the ground as a result of his whaling of the knife. Good thing with the bag and not him.
That's not how it was portrayed to the officer.
I have no further questions.
Okay. I would like that information about the Facebook and the answering.
Yes, it would be, probably a little bit of time to get that together, but I will have that together for you. Thank you.
Anything else already? Police Report?
No, Mr. Williams.
Okay. Solicitor Report? Solicitor Wagner not here, and there's no report. We dealt with all that.
Okay, and the other, B is not going to be discussed right now?
Pardon?
The wireless ordinance?
Uh, the wireless ordinance, we need to set a date for the hearing, and when I spoke with Solicitor Wagner today, it suits him for 6 o'clock at our next state of meeting. Okay, Helen?
Okay.
Okay?
I can do that.
And we'll get you a copy of the stuff, the information.
Yeah, by, by the 7th.
Is it agreed upon by the Board of Supervisors that we set the hearing for 6 o'clock?
Need a motion?
Yep, I need a motion.
How many get a motion?
Motion made. I'll second. All those in favor give their consent of saying aye. Ayes have it, so ordered.
Okay.
Permit Report?
You have it in front of you. We have two, one new home and two additions going up.
Mm-hmm.
That's about it for January. I mean, everything else is normal.
Okay. Correspondents, likes...
This is the letter that was sent to Mr. Linker by Madden, the zoning officer, and hit Mr. Linker's response.
Okay.
For your information.
PSAP's bylaws are...
Okay, this is for your information. They are looking to change a couple things on the bylaws. One of them will be the proposed dues for 2015. For us, they would be going up from 837 to 870 if it's passed. And there's a couple little other ones that are there to be voted on at the state convention. And that's all the correspondence I have.
Old Business, Ag Security?
Okay, the notification and advertisement of the 30-day notice for incoming and renewal or withdrawal from the Ag Security area has been done. March 15th is the last day. I'm sending out reminder notices next week.
Mm-hmm.
Then the 45-day review will start with the County Planning Commission, Ag Security Committee, and the Township Planning Commission. Whether you guys get a response from those three agencies or not, we will have to set a hearing at the 45-day, end of the 45 days. We can set that in March.
Okay. Helen?
Let me ask you a question.
Mm-hmm.
Backing up to the proposed bylaws changes to PSAPs, do we have to take any actions?
No, that's information.
Okay, thank you.
That's, the only person that has to take action is the voting member going to the state convention.
Thank you.
Question, Henry?
Yes.
Who are all the members of the Ag Security team? I remember two, I'm a little involved in it.
Gary, Gary Robb, Glenn Ebersol, Warren or Larry Watts?
Warren.
Warren Watts, Ken Martz, and Henry. Henry as the supervisor.
Henry.
Yeah, Henry. Also, you have the draft newsletter.
Let me see, Helen, we got what, if any new applicants need what, by the 15th?
By the 15th.
By the 15th. If anybody wants to enroll, or you know nobody wants to enroll, you have to have it in and done by the 15th.
Yes.
Even if you're here before?
If you're in, yes. Send me that letter back, Stanley.
Thank you.
Yeah, gotta get that in, Stanley.
Otherwise, I start making phone calls.
I'm trying to explain to Lee, he has to sign up also, again, correct?
Yes, everyone, everyone has to renew.
Everyone has to sign up.
See, with Ag Security, you can join anytime, but you can only withdraw every seven years. So, we do an update every seven years.
So, everybody that's in it now needs to reapply?
Yes. And if you're not in it, if you're not in it, Lee, come and see me tomorrow.
That's a bad word, it's laying on the desk.
And I mean, we need to take a look to see who else comes back. If not, we need to bump them and notify them.
That's what I'm doing next week.
And that's what we need to do, or otherwise, they'll set it on the back burner and lose it, and then, then, then they got a problem, staff.
I'll throw them in there.
Yeah. I got mine to fill out, too.
Thank you.
And actually, one that I thought was going to withdraw, actually renewed.
Yes.
Yeah, the Fitzpatrick property?
Yeah.
The new owner renewed.
Okay, good. We have how many thousand acres in that?
3,000 some odd.
Yeah.
I mean, it's getting up there. You got the newsletter draft. Any changes, corrections, please get it to me by Tuesday, so I can get it going. The police, you'll see on one page, it says, "Police Report." Cliff's going to get that to me by Tuesday. That's all the old business I have.
Okay. New business sound, county convention?
You have a report there for you.
Okay.
Basically, Mr. Bell was there. He was talking about pursuing a grant for an updated communication systems, going to a VHF, yeah, VF, VFH.
VHF.
Thank you. This digital system. He says probably two years. And then he went on about assault and emergencies, to contact him and work out a deal with Pendot. Mr. De Prospero of H.R. Thompson addressed Act 46, which is the Volunteer Firefighter Cancer Workers' Comp Act. He explained why the premiums went up for volunteer fire companies, and that the insurance industry is trying to get the act more streamlined and detailed on which cancers they're looking at. And then, Mr. Keller, Representative Keller, informed us that the transportation bill passed, and the prevailing rate, wage was raised $100,000 from $25,000. And there is a new program for local roads, for paving local roads, where you can get a grant on roads that have 500 cars or less per day.
Mm-hmm.
But you have to go to some training to get, be eligible to get this grant.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Keller went over the acts that were passed and are being considered, and he said that Pendot is looking at bridge bundling, which is basically one designed for all bridges, little tweaks depending on, you know, width and length and all that. And we had a very good lunch.
Okay.
Anything else, Brian? Did I miss anything?
Yeah, that's a pretty good report.
Thank you, Helen, for that report. I have one thing, and I should have mentioned on the highway report, we brought up last month. We have received no bill or anything from CenturyLink out there on the damage that was done to our truck or whatnot. They put a new pole in, they have a bill that was for us, you know, a little controversial on the height of that, et cetera. Nevertheless, we haven't received anything from them, talk to the insurance company, and the minor damage that's done to the truck out there, we take the plates off the side, pull the bulkhead back down, replated, and so there'll be no cost, no cost to the insurance company or anything else. Truck's serviceable, it's just, is the way it is, and I forgot to put that in my report. So, cold weather, we will be fixing that shortly. Okay, I have nothing else?
I have nothing else.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
I second a motion.
Motion made with a second. All those in favor give their consent of saying aye. Ayes have it, so ordered.
Mr. Peters, you can sign the placate checks, just not the one for Orestown?
Not Orestown.
Henry, can you sign that one check for the parking rec board?
Yep.
What do we all have first?
He's not ready. They don't, I get a minute of this.
No, that was the invoice of treasures, that you did speak upon.
That's fine. Big time.
Yes. Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. If you wanted to clarify, then you do that. Hold a second.
Take care of the better walking.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I'm listening, I'm having to play over and over. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I didn't know what you were saying. I started to hear what you were saying, so I had to ask if they could.
Yeah. And sometimes it's just, and what I've done in the past is, CC.
It's online for the prejudiced Orestown. And so, it says that incidents to ARD for these charges to the areas and several parts of the stop sign. So, that happened.